Today's date is September ninth, two point four S six P M. This meeting is now called. My name is Beverly Bonaparte. I'm the vice chair and I will be conducting the meeting on this evening. First member please stand for president.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We now have a moment of silence. Thank you. We're down to item number three. Board chair, you've had your package. So what's your pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that at this time we approve the agenda.
Yes ma'am. Approved for our second. All those in favor signify by eye.
Aye.
Item number four. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from August twenty second, twenty twenty four. What's your pleasure?
Madam Chief.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from August twenty second, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. All those in favor signify by eye.
Aye.
Item number five. School reports. Ms. Landy Edwards. Richard Carroll Elementary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, so as you have my report's report, our current enrollment is six hundred and ninety. For the month of August, we had ten discipline referrals. And I'm gonna come back to our data in just a second. Um, the upcoming events, our after school programs have begun. Um, interim's graduating tomorrow. We have our scholastic book fair coming up. And then this Friday, we have grits for grandparents at the school, um, Friday morning. And then September twenty third is our upcoming, um, S I C and P T O V. Um, you should have a copy of our data in front of you. Um, areas of refinement, things that went well for us. We had growth in all grade levels in the area of mathematics. Um, we had growth in our sixth grade E L A. Our cohort of sixth graders grew in E L A. So when we looked at our kids that moved from fifth and sixth grade, the same group of kids, they grew. Um, and then that our cohort of fourth, fifth and sixth graders, um, grew in math as well. Um, as far as areas of growth, we declined in E L A and third, fourth and fifth. Um, and then our group of third graders, that cohort, um, which is current fourth graders, they declined in math as well. So how are we gonna improve instruction at Richard Carroll Elementary School? Um, right now, our main focus is tier one instruction. Um, we have been deconstructing our standards. We started that process the last P D of the school year. We have continued with that there, um, and then looking at the rigor of our assessments. Um, it's, it was very evident that the way we word our assessments doesn't always match with the way the state assessments are written. So we're looking closely at that. Um, the district has revised the E L A and math curriculum tasting guides and we're using those. We, we've also implemented a, um, schoolwide intervention block to help with our tier three students. And then, um, we also, to help with our tier three students, we've also implemented a high intensity tutor program. Any questions? Yes ma'am.
Just one, can you please just answer a few questions?
Oh, absolutely. So tier one is what all students receive, um, no matter special ed, private boards, all students in the school have ever received that instruction. And then, um, our tiers two students, they just may need a little extra help within the classroom. The teachers provide that through small group instruction. Um, and then we look at like the bottom tenth percentile based on math, S D ready. Um, we did a universal screener in math, um, and we compiled that data. Um, and those are significantly below grade level. We pulled them, um, for basically skills that they're below, not on their grade level, but it may be something they missed in second grade or third grade. Then over to try to move them up on grade level.
The point of that is to build that capability.
Yes ma'am. If you get them to grade level.
Any more questions? Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize our teacher of the year, Ms. Allison. And then I also, um, looked at our data and the way our South Carolina report card is moving, um, they're not just looking for kids who are, who are meeting standard. They're also looking to see if I'm, if we're growing our kids. Um, so in that initiative, I'll look at our third, fourth and fifth and sixth grade data. And I would like to recognize my fifth grade team. They moved the most students in E L A and math. While that does not mean those kids are meeting standard, it does mean that those kids should grow. Whether it meant moving from approaches to nets or, you know, but I would just like to say congratulations to my fifth grade team. They showed the most growth for all students.
Now we'll have Mr. Keith Miller from Bamber Middle.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
Okay, everyone should have their board report. And first want to go over our current enrollment. Right now, we have a hundred and ninety one students, ninety in seventh grade and a hundred and one in eighth grade. You have your discipline for August twenty twenty four in front of you. Also, I forwarded an invitation to you today for our open house. Open house will be held tomorrow night from five to seven P M. And we will also have our annual Title One parent meeting at four thirty. I hope to see all of you there tomorrow night. Alright, next, I want to go over our twenty twenty four testing data. And you receive a chart with our middle school data. And then you also received in my packet, an analysis. So let's look at the analysis of the twenty twenty four data. First, let's look at our blows. What went well last year? Well, one hundred percent of our eighth grade honors algebra one students scored a C or higher or the end, on the end of course test. Also, when you look at apples to apples, what our students did the previous year in twenty twenty three to what they did in twenty twenty four, our seventh graders grew in E L A, two point six points. And then when you look at apples to apples, our eighth graders, they grew in math, nine and one tenth. I gotta remember that, because you lack a rap to say. Nine and one tenth points from spring twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. One thing I failed to realize until this afternoon is that we have another glow. Our eighth grade math students are scoring above the state average.
Yes.
So while we are achieving in some areas, we do have a lot of room to grow. How can we do better? Our twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four seventh graders, the cohort, they declined in math, four point four and two tenths from spring twenty twenty three to spring twenty twenty four. And then we had a decline in our eighth grade cohort in E L A, three point three and nine tenths. And then we saw, when you're looking at apples to oranges, we saw decline in E L A and math. So what are we gonna do? What, what are we changing this year? We are refining our English, language arts and math curriculum. We have adopted new E L A books and a new E L A curriculum. We're also preparing to introduce new math standards for the twenty four, twenty five school year. We have refined the use of our Master Connect benchmarks and unit assessments. And those assessments are aligned to the state standards to make sure we are accurately assessing the standards. We assign team leads for E L A and math. We are implementing two hours of E L A and math intervention weekly for every student in the school. And then we will be implementing a high intensity tutoring program. Any student will, will be offered four hours of after school individualized intervention. And our goals, even though we had some declines, our goals still remain the same. We still hold the same high expectations for our students and our staff. By twenty twenty five, I expect the E M S to increase the percentage of students scoring meets and exceeds on the E L A and math sections of S D ready. And we will close the achievement gaps as compared with the state. By twenty twenty six, I expect our school to earn a palmetto gold or silver award as established by the Education Accountability Act of nineteen ninety eight. And by twenty twenty eight, I expect our school to consistently rate good or excellent as measured by the South Carolina school report card. I want to take this opportunity to recognize you individuals. I'm gonna call Ms. Monica Harley up to, up to the podium. This is Mrs. Monica Harley. She teaches eighth grade honors algebra. It was her students that scored one hundred percent on the end of course test. Ms. Harley was also selected by our staff as teacher of the year. This is her second time receiving this award. And also, our eighth grade team grew over nine points on the math S D ready assessment last year. Congratulations. Next, I want to call Mr. Kristen Jensen. Please be podium. Let me introduce Mr. Kristen Jensen to you. Mr. Jensen is certified in every area imaginable. Last year, when we could not staff a math teacher, Mr. Jensen volunteered to stop teaching science and to teach math. And he is a part of the nine point jumping growth that we experienced last year in eighth grade. Congratulations. And that concludes my report. May I answer any questions for you?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Moving on now to Mr. Joyce Smith, principal of Bamber High School.
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
Bring you greetings from Bamber High School. We have two thousand twenty four school year well underway. Our enrollment is before you, three hundred and eighty two students as of right now. And I think that's significant to point out that we ended the year around three fifty one. So we're having a, a good influx of students from surrounding areas joining what's going on at Bamber High. The discipline data is there. We got a few hiccups at the very beginning, but we got the message is sent and everything is smooth sailing now. Monday, September the sixteenth is gonna be a big day at Bamber High School in the afternoon. Um, we are having our first school improvement council meeting this year. And that is one of our schools' rocks is improving the parent community relations at Bamber High School. So we're, um, meeting with them and we want to hear how that council is gonna move forward with helping our school serve our students better. That meeting will be at five thirty. Immediately following the five thirty meeting at six P M, we'll have a parent university meeting. And this is geared towards our senior parents where our guidance department is hosting, um, an opportunity to engage with senior parents early. Not necessarily about graduation, but about things that parents can be preparing for to help students make that next transition. Things such as where to find scholarships, how to fill out F A F S R. Um, they'll do a transcript review that night to ensure everything is on the up and up, so we don't have any slips. Um, so this is a good spot where parents can ask questions and learn what things they can be doing to support their seniors. And then following that Wednesday, we also have college, I'm briefing by exception here. College application day will be Wednesday at Bamber High School. So we have a number of local and universities across the state coming to Bamber High School. And students will be able to build out applications on site. So that's an important, um, next week for Bamber High School. If you go with me for a second, I wanna draw your attention right now to the data packet. And I'll come back to number four. Um, and let's talk about our scores. You will notice a slight decrease from last year to this year, um, in the areas of algebra and English two. But we're still hovering or approaching towards that state average. Um, while we don't want any decreases, we're not worried. We're confident that those will go in the right direction. We have a more significant decrease in U S history and constitution. And we're working directly with those students. And, uh, we have a, a plan that includes incentives, um, professional development, peer tutoring across teacher to teacher in some of our areas where we haven't success. Trying to see what things we can transfer over to the classroom. While the subject area may be different, teaching is teaching and good teaching is one of your results. So we're proud of our staff and what they're doing with Bamber High Schools. We're not discouraged at all. We're still proud of where we are and we have a bright future going forward. I also like to take this time to notice a significant increase in the area of biology. And I will be recognizing at this time, Ms. Heather Palmer and Ms. April Miles, our biology teachers for a fifteen point increase in biology. Uh, Ms. Heather Palmer has, was also selected as our teacher of the year. So back to number four, high intensity tutoring. You've heard it mentioned twice already. And I want to tell you just a moment of how that's gonna be implemented at Bamber High School. So high intensity tutoring, also known as H I T, is, um, last year, we started an intervention period in our day. We carved out time in our schedule and the students have something that's called R A P E. That's what we refer to as. On Fridays, we go to club day, but Mondays through Tuesday, you need to go back to your first, second, third or fourth period respectively, depending on the day, to receive extra help and extra credit. So this is in addition to the tier one instruction that they're receiving in the classrooms. High intensity tutoring is gonna come into place because we've been doing some data analysis with test scores and selecting students that could benefit from high intensity tutoring. So Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, we've established a, what we call a testing lab in the band room that's not being used all the time right now, where we have tables and chairs set up. And these selected students will be going there Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays from nine thirty to ten thirty, from nine thirty to ten, three days a week. That'll give them a whole extra class period. And they're gonna receive catered instruction based on what their teacher says they're deficient in to help get these students caught up. So that's my plan for getting us to where we need to be incentivizing these students and making sure that, um, catered instruction is gonna hit exactly the specific needs of the students. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Thank you so very much. Next, we have Ms. Shannon Johnson from Demacola Elementary.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Greetings from Demacola Elementary School. The great things are happening. We have a total of two hundred and thirty two students. It is growing every day, uh, from last month also. Discipline is not in front of you. And I forgot to put it on the board report because we have very few discipline going on at Demacola Elementary School. So far, we only have two referrals the entire school year. And I think those two referrals were just misunderstanding. So the, um, behavior expectations were set in the beginning. And the students are doing an excellent job in showing that they can behave and they're doing their absolutely best. Only two referrals. And through those two referrals, more expectations were set. And the other ones haven't gotten the message. Okay, so we hope to keep it down. Okay. Our teachers attended a data analysis professional development. They received personalized classroom data of their students from the fall of twenty twenty three. And they were able to compare them to the same students, those after the after that. And these was talking about the same students in, in the grade before and compare them to the same students that they have this time. The professional development allowed the teachers to think about ways to improve instructional practices and positively impact student achievement. So they're able to see their role they have right in front of them. And we talked about expectations and the things that they can do in order to increase the test scores for the current students that they have now. Demacola Elementary School had our first S I C, the School Improvement Council. It was held on August the twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The goals of the S I C are to improve the school, the school's climate rating, to raise test scores and increase parent involvement. Those are our goals. Uh, we starting out strong with S I C and we gonna continue to improve every month. This is something that we're gonna stay on, stay on and see it fruition throughout, um, throughout the school year. So climate rating, raise test scores and increase parent involvement. Uh, Demacola Elementary School hosted the grits for grandparents on today. It was successful. We had so many parents. Oh my goodness, it was, it was awesome. They had grits, uh, sausage, eggs, um, juice and toast. And it was just awesome to have so many parent, grandparents to come out and eat breakfast with their child, their grandchild. Um, after they finished eating, they came to visit our scholastic book fair that we have going on right now. The scholastic book fair, oh, back to grits for grandparents. We had, had to build almost two hundred grandparents to come today.
Wow.
They were excited. Um, they were coming in so fast, we kept running out of signing sheets. So we were, we were excited. Um, and it, it was very successful. And as they were coming out of halls, like, there's no book fair, but, you know, and they came in and this book fair. Uh, they spent a lot of money in the book fair today. So the scholastic book fair opened, um, in our media center. It started September the third and it ended, will end tomorrow. Students are actively purchasing books to increase their home library. So we're proud of that book fair. Before you, you have, uh, our test scores for Demacola Elementary School. Compared to our, uh, state scores, we have a lot of work to do. Even though we have increased in every area, third, fourth, fifth grade has increased in E L A in every area and also math. Math has increased in third, fourth and fifth grade. But even though we are going in the right direction and we're gonna continue to go in the right direction, um, we want to see these numbers go up. We're not near what the state is saying, but we are going in the right direction and we're proud of that. How are we gonna continue to grow? This high intensive tutoring that you've been hearing about, we are participating in that. Uh, varsity tutors, our students are scheduled to attend varsity tutors Monday through Friday without a break. Monday, Wednesday and Friday, they're gonna do E L A. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're gonna do math. Not only are they gonna go every day, they're actually gonna be sitting in front of a live person who's gonna be tutoring them. So we're excited about that to get online with a live tutor in front of them. We're also gonna, um, continue with Master Connect. Master Connect aligned to the state standard. So if you follow Master Connect, it has been proven to work. So we're gonna continue with Master Connect. It is designed for third, fourth and fifth grade, but I pushed it back to second grade. Our second grade teachers are dealing with that and Master Connect. So we can have those students already ready to hit it and ready when they become third graders. So our second grade teachers are having fun with it. And, um, so we pushed it back to second grade. So we're excited about that. Our math and interventions, we have math interventions across the board. And from pre K all the way to fifth grade, we have intervention periods set aside to, um, get that extra help in math and E L A. Ms. Wanda Summers, the things come through with. Ms. Wanda Summers, she's an excellent fourth grade teacher, excellent. Uh, she also teaches E L A and social studies. And she is responsible for these scores going up. And we so proud of her and, um, thank you. She's very passionate about her students and the things she's doing. Also, I want to tell you that she is also our teacher of the year for Demacola Elementary School. Thank you, Summers. Appreciate it. Um, and that's the report for Demacola Elementary School. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We now have, um, Mrs. Goldsmith from Demacola Middle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our enrollment is a hundred and forty six students, sister six, forty four, sixth grade, forty six, seventh grade and fifty six, eighth grade. Um, we have our discipline report in front of you. Um, we expect to see a decline in that, uh, next month. We're working on some leadership skills and some transitioning for our sixth graders who, um, Dr. Johnson has sent to us in their very bulk. I'm pleased to say that we've been awarded the Donald General Youth Literacy Grant. It was written. It was written by Ms. Darnell, who is our librarian that we share with Demarcola Elementary School. And the grant funding can be used to expand literacy programs, purchase new technology, and support literacy initiatives of purchase books. So we're excited that we were able to get that grant this year. And we want to thank Ms. Darnell for writing that grant and securing that for us. Our students completed math the week of the nineteenth through the twenty-third. Students had small conferences with me to analyze their previous spring goal and to set their winter goal. We found that to be very beneficial. Students knowing the mark that we're expecting them to meet so that when they test, they're able to write down at the end of the test where they are. So they know what they're shooting for in the winter when we test again. And we've tested a reading language and math, and sixth grade students tested a science, which this time will be their baseline data. The teachers and I looked at ESTE grade results as we identified students who need intervention, dualized, and varsity tutors. We included an intervention period this year. Varsity tutors will start in approximately the next two weeks with an additional hour of small group focus on Monday and Wednesday. We've identified students who need additional support in ELA. So they'll have thirty minutes each of those days, which will constitute an hour. And then Tuesday and Thursday, we will reach out for our math students. And so those students will be pulled out and will work with a tutor online. And the other students will remain with the teachers in the class there, and they will continue to help those students in their areas of weakness. We completed interim parent conferences on the Fourth of September. Offered parents an opportunity to speak with teachers, not at the end of the nine weeks, but at the middle point. So that teachers could speak about challenges students may be having, or things that they may need to do to pull their grades up before the end of the nine weeks. And we'll continue that during the year. We'll have conferences at interims and at report cards. So parents have the opportunity to come in every four weeks to meet with teachers to see what students are needing. And we had a very good turnout. And during that time, we also gave parents out their students' ESTE grade scores so they could review their child's spring scores and see how they progressed. We looked at our data for this year with respect to ESTE grade. Was very pleased that we had gains. You all know that we're the smallest, and we struggled a lot with not having a full staff of certified teachers. And you'll notice most of the people here are from the middle school, because I asked them all to come, because this, it's been a collective effort. And so it hasn't just been me doing it. It has not been just the certified teachers that we had doing it. Parent professionals stepped in and really worked to do whatever it was we asked them to do and to work with certified teachers to help our students. And as a result, sixth grade ELA had a thirteen point nine percent increase. Seventh grade had sixteen point two increase. Math for sixth grade had thirteen point nine percent increase. And seventh grade had one point six percent increase. We did have declines in math for eighth grade. We declined six point one and then six point eight percent. However, I do want to say, like Ms. Miller and Dr. Johnson, I went through and pulled the students who tested sixth grade to look at the same students to see what happened in seventh grade. Sixth grade for ELA had a forty-nine percent increase. Seventh grade had eighty-six percent increase. And so eighth grade had a forty-five percent increase. So students individually have been making increases. Even though it's not, it may not reflected in the overall individual student's increase. So they may have gone, like Ms. Miller said, from does not meet to approaches, or approaches to meets, or meets to exceeds, which is very good for our children because we're showing growth. For math for sixth grade, there was a thirty-four percent increase. Seventh grade was a ninety-six percent increase. And eighth grade was an eighty-three percent increase. And I want to recognize those teachers who had increases. And I'll start with English with Ms. Mandy Jameson, if she would come forward. And Ms. Fisher was unable to be here this evening. But Ms. Fisher, who taught sixth grade, ELA also had increases. And I want to recognize Ms. Smart, who's not here. But she was one of our parent professionals who worked with sixth grade math. And so that's not an area that she's certified in, but she worked with those students. And we were able to see a thirteen point nine percent increase. And so I want to and last but not least, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ricardo Arlington, math teacher, for his increases. And let me say something quickly about Mr. Arlington. I have to say this because this, this is important. Yeah, I'm going to say it because I'm going to brag about this. With the seventh grade, he was teaching four classes. So he was teaching four classes, which means he didn't have a plan of year last year, which can be a little rough. With the seventh grade, out of all the students that tested, only two students did not increase individually. So ninety-six percent of those students increased. And I just want to congratulate him because that was a talent. And again, it's a collective effort. And so all of my people from the middle school will stand. Please. And so again, it's not just one of us, it's all of us. And we're working really hard to pull us up. And this year, we have a full staff as far as core teachers are concerned. And so we hope to see greater improvements. And I thank you for your support. Do you all have any questions of me?
No questions.
Oh, and my Teacher of the Year is Ms. Teresa Johnson Rivers. She was unable to be here this evening. She had a previous engagement. But we'd also like to congratulate her. She is our sped teacher.
Next, we have Dr. Deionne Simmons Presley of Demarcola High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everyone is doing well. I come to share with you just a few thoughts and ideas and practices and successes at Demarcola High School. You have the enrollment before you, which is one eighty-five. Ninth grade has forty-nine students. Tenth grade, forty-two. Eleventh grade, forty. And our senior class is comprised of fifty-four students. The discipline report is in front of you. I should note that you see an excessive number of tardies there. And obviously, those types of things happen at the start of school year. And it's not because kids don't know where they're going. It's they're testing the system. If they get away with it, they're late. So that's why you see a number of tardy fractions there because we're keeping up with that. And that number has started to decline because kids, once they've gotten a certain number of tardies, they begin to go to in-school suspension. So they've gotten the message, and things are starting to clear up as it relates to that. I'm going to skip over the EOC data and go down the rest of this and then come back to the EOC data. We held parent teacher conferences, just like the middle school did on the Fourth of this month. And we thought that was just a great practice of not waiting until the end of the nine weeks to say, hey, your child didn't pass the class. Let's catch them in the middle of the, middle of the nine weeks and say, hey, what can we do to try to get ahead of them not passing the class and do what we can do to help them to be successful? So, and it was very well attended. I was quite surprised at the number of parents who showed up because typically that, that doesn't happen. But in this particular case, a number of parents showed up. And we're certainly grateful for that. And like the middle school, we're going to continue to do that because I think it's really going to make a difference based upon the number of calls we've gotten, comments that teachers have shared with me that they've gotten from parents who actually came to check on their students' progress. So I'm glad that we did that. And Ms. Goldsmith actually came up with the idea. I just stole it from her. I think it worked very well. We're having our first SIC meeting tomorrow. Media Center, Demarcola High School at three thirty. And anyone who decides to come can certainly attend. But that's our plan tomorrow. We're starting at three thirty, probably at three thirty, that is. Our juniors and seniors are going to Augusta on the twelfth. That's this week. They're going to the CSRA College Night. The goal of the college night is obviously to expose students to college opportunities, scholarship opportunities with a number of the colleges that will be represented in Augusta for this particular event. Our GROTC will have its annual blood drive on the twenty-sixth of this month. And our seniors will be having that Johnston's graduation presentation on the twenty-seventh. Now we can back up and talk about the EOC results. I'm happy to say, for the first time, this is, I think, my ninth year at Demarcola High School in, at least in eight years. For the first time, we have shown improvement, significant improvement in some areas in all of our EOC test areas for the first time significantly. In Algebra I, we had a twenty-nine point six four percent improvement. In Biology I, twenty-five point one eight percent improvement. In English II, one point two eight. And I'll take that as opposed to negative one point two eight. And in U.S. History and Constitution, point, a seven point five nine percent increase. And as I stated earlier, we showed improvement in all areas. That tells me that we're headed in the right direction. The areas strategies that we implemented last year are working. And our goal is just to continue those strategies and preferences and hopefully continue to move forward. One of the things that we're going to focus on, or are focusing on, is increasing the rigor. Because one of the things that has always bothered me as a student to have an A in a class and then not pass the associated EOC test that goes with it. So that tells me that there's a lack of rigor there. So one of the things that we're working on very diligently and trying to continue to work on is increasing the level of rigor throughout all of our classes. And while there, these are specific subjects that teachers talk. It has obviously been a concerted effort upon all of the Demarcola family. There's the phrase, or the adages, it takes a village to raise a child. It also takes an entire village to teach and turn around the school. And that's what we've been trying to do. We've been doing that very diligently. So I want to thank all of the staff, faculty, staff, parents who've supported and continue to support our efforts at Demarcola High School. I want to take a moment and acknowledge the teachers who are here, who have taught specific courses. Ms. Devon Brown is not with us this evening. We talked English II. That's what happens when you sit in the back. I bet that's a lesson to every student. When you sit in the back of the class, you miss something. And somebody. We have Ms. Willie Fields, our U.S. History and Constitution teacher, right here with us. And I told Ms. Fields, between her years of experience and my years of experience, we've been around a while. But it takes both of us to get to that. We've been around a while. We have Ms. Jennifer Sanders, our Algebra I teacher. She continues to do a fantastic job. And then we have Mr. Ernest Valentine, our Biology I teacher. And as Principal of Demarcola High School, I'm just excited to have the opportunity to be a part of what's happening at Demarcola High School. I will say that, as many of my colleagues have mentioned, we too are working with and implementing the HIT grant, the High Intensity Tutoring Grant. We also are working towards leveling the playing field with regard to tier-one instruction. And obviously, as I mentioned earlier, our goal is to increase the level of rigor across the board at Demarcola High School. I want to also announce that Master Sergeant Philip Robinson, who's not with us tonight, is our Teacher of the Year at Demarcola High School. And I will answer any questions that you may have at this time.
We are just so proud of all of you guys to hear the improvement and to go that we're alive and everybody's hearing that we're not at the bottom of the total toll that we are on the rise. That is so good to hear from everybody. I thank all of you on behalf of Ms. Walker and her absence. We really do thank you guys for what, the work that you're doing.
Thank you, buddy.
Next on our agenda is item number six, truancy update from Ms. Louise Croft.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Of course, I didn't want to prepare like everyone else. We didn't have a whole We are having a great time with our truancy at the beginning of the year. We've had our truancy webinar update training that was conducted by the State Department. The levels right now are low. We're still early in the game, but they are low right now. We have, at Demarcola Elementary, just one. Demarcola Middle School, we clearly, on the, on the paper, it says two. But we've cleared that up since then. So they have none. Demarcola High School, none. Richard Carrick Elementary School, six. But we've cleared up two of those. So they have gone down. Vanberg Elhart Middle, Elhart Middle School, zero. And Vanberg Elhart High School, two. We have also, September is Attention Awareness Month. And our slogan this year is be present, be careful. I have asked all schools to plan activities that will encourage the students to come to school every day and continue that, even provide incentives, fun activities, and that would help. So we're going to see what happens in the month of September and beyond. I always place what the trunk, that what I do along with a social worker is because we work hand in hand. I bring him the problems, and he helps me solve the problems. So we do a lot together. We have assisted with ensuring our culturally diverse families have resources available for success. We've done some home visits. And we've also made preparations for some methyl visits, immunizations, and different things best. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Walker. We're down to item number seven, accolade report. This is Robert Williams.
I'm not Robert Williams, I'm a little bit better. But I would like to stand in his absence. He's busy tonight, working with athletic things. And give his report. We've started the fall sports season. Football at Bambergerr High School is two and one, and they will host Calhoun County this coming Friday. Demarcola is one and two, and will host, and will host HKT this Friday. And volleyball, the Bambergerr High School and Demarcola High School are undefeated in the region and will play each other tomorrow night in Denmark. JV starts at five thirty, and varsity at six thirty. Good luck, Denmark. That's going to be a good match. Cross country, Vanberg will start their season Wednesday in Aiken. And tennis, Vanberg, the Vanberg tennis team will travel tomorrow. Any questions, I'll be sure to pass it on to Mr. Robert Williams.
We're now down to number eight, superintendent's reports. Student's application.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to start tonight by saying, reiterating what the principles you've you've thrown off, standing up here tonight and saying, recognizing all of our schools and all of our staff for their hard work and their dedication and what they're doing every day to help make the lives and the education of all of our children better. I would like to say that in addition to all the faculty, staff, and teachers recognized here tonight, I would like to personally say a thank you to our school administrators. So I would like to ask Dr. Deionne Simmons, your principal, please stand. Dr. Deionne Simmons, and Mrs. Patricia Goldsmith, Dr. Shannon Johnson, Mrs. Denise Miller, Ms. Mandy Edwards, and Mr. Jordan Smith. I just want to say thank you because without all of you, the work that your faculty and staff are doing would not be possible without your great leaderships. You are right. Our schools are moving in the right direction. We have made vast gains in the last two years that we've all been a family. And I don't expect us to go nowhere but up from here. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. The faculty and staff that's present, thank you all as well. You deserve everything that is mentioned here tonight and more. And if I could give it, I promise you. But anyway, I wanted to say thank you for the great leadership of our But anyway, I wanted to say thank you for the great leaders of our schools, because you are wonderful. And I would also like to say, Ms. Crosby, Ms. Denise Crosby, thank you too for coming on board as our district truancy officer. And also, Mr. Jaquari Washington, she mentioned that we have a full-time social worker, because without that person working with Ms. Crosby to address some of the social, emotional, physiological needs of our students, then the hard work that our staff and teachers are doing in the classroom would also not be possible. So thank you. I think you heard all of the principals mention their Teachers of the Year, but I too, this is such an accolade and such a great achievement, I just want to say it again. Here are six school-level Teachers of the Year. So if you're in the audience when I call your name, please stand up again. For Richard Carroll Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Allison Harper, remain standing. BE Middle School, Ms. Monica Harley. BE High School, Ms. Heather Palmer. Demarcola Elementary School, Ms. Wanda Summers. Demarcola Middle School, Ms. Teresa Rivers-Johnson. And Demarcola High School, Mr. Philip Robinson. So once again, let's give these individuals, who are selected by their peers to represent their schools, to be Teacher of the Year. But all six of these individuals will now go for the competition to be selected for District Teacher of the Year. If you're not familiar what that entails, we follow the State Department of Education's template. They all have to submit a VITA, they all have to submit lesson plans, and they have to come to an intensive interview in front of an outside panel. So it's not district personnel that they'll go up in front of, and they will compete to be selected for District Teacher of the Year. So I just want to say, good luck to all six of these candidates, and I for one, am very glad I'm not on that panel. What a hard decision that will be. But good luck to those individuals. I too would like to personally thank all of our faculty and staff at each and every one of our schools for their hard work and the growth that we've seen in our state testing, district and state testing. I do want to explain that what you've heard here tonight, in comparison with the data that you have in front of you, please keep in mind that this is raw score data, individual student score data by grade level. School report cards, district report cards are yet to come. Please keep in mind that the report cards will change this year. Have you heard tonight, a lot of the principals talked about growth? That is what's important. Our new report card this year will be on that growth model, so I am, we are all very anxious to see what our report cards look like with the data that we're seeing in our students, the amount of growth that they have achieved in the last school year. When the report cards are no longer embargoed, guess what? We get to present all this to you again, but we will be presenting our district and our school report cards when they come and are released. In your packet, you have a copy of... And I would like to say, for all those in attendance tonight, those listening in, last week, if you watched the news, you're probably aware that the State Board of Education had its second final reading of the Model Cell Phone Policy, otherwise known as Proviso 1.103. Last Friday, late Friday afternoon, South Carolina School Board Association did send out the model policy to all districts. Now it's up to district personnel, meaning the school principals, Mr. Olmeyer and myself. We will be working to incorporate that policy into our other student code of conduct policies, and I hope to bring the draft policies for first reading at our next board meeting, in accordance with State Proviso 1.103 for that cell phone policy. And just for the purpose of those listening in tonight, Proviso 1.103 falls under the Anti-Bullying School Safety Proviso, and it says that to receive state funds allocated for state aid to classrooms, a school district shall implement a policy adopted by the State Board of Education that prohibits access to personal electronic communication devices by students during the school day. One way that this policy differs from our current board policy on personal communication devices is that our current board policy prohibits access to these devices during instruction period, but the new State Board policy is very clear, it prohibits access to these devices for the entire school day. Personal electronic devices are hereby referred to as a device, which means any device utilized to access the internet, Wi-Fi, cellular telephone signals, capturing images or videos. This includes, but is not limited to, cell phones, smartwatches, tablets, and gaming devices. Also, personal electronic communication device accessories, such as earbuds, all under this policy. And of course, I gave you a copy of the Proviso on the second page. It defines the school day, as I previously said, is that period of time that a student is present on the school campus from the start of their arrival, whether it be on time or at the tardy bell, until after the final fail dismissal at the end of the day. So again, I will be bringing the model policy, or the state rates, hopefully by next month or beginning of next year. And lastly, in your packet, is a snapshot of our district enrollment that was taken on Friday after noon, or September the fourth. And as you can see, we're going to open up. Eighteen twenty-six was our district enrollment, which is about sixty, sixty-some kids higher than what it was about this time last year. And that's... That gets us down to requests for overnight trips. Item number nine on the agenda, which is also me. So we have one coming to us from our truancy officer and our social worker. This is to attend professional development in Charlotte, North Carolina, October the sixth through the ninth. You have in your packet an explanation of the trip, the title of the conference, and the agendas for the professional development and all the topics that will be discussed at this period. I'm asking for the board's approval tonight.
It was the pleasure of the board. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the request for the overnight trip for the professional development for our truancy officer and our social worker.
Second. This is... This is... We've made a motion, it's in properly second. All those in favor, signify by aye. And I went down to item ten, financial report.
Hey, good evening, everybody. You have your financial report in your packet, and also, I am still working on some changes for the budget, so we will have that presented back in October. I did send you a draft copy last night to your email, you can review that, but we will bring that back to you in October when I make some more changes. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Now, making sure.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the financial report as presented.
Motion made in properly second. All those in favor, signify by aye. Financial report passed. Now we're down to item number one again.
There are no...
We don't have any comments. Now down to executive session. Can I have a motion for you? Motion has been made that we move into executive session for employment personnel A, one personnel recommendation for hire, two personnel recommendations for resignation, C discussion of release of students, D and C for discussion of supervision evaluation. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
We are now into executive session. Thanks, everyone, for coming and listening, enjoy.
We are now back in executive session for employment personnel recommendations for hire, personnel recommendations for resignation, discussion of release of students at this time.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the employee employment personnel recommendation for hire for employee 1A and approve the student transfer request for student B1.
This is properly second. All those in favor of personnel recommendations for A1 and B1 should be fired by eye. At this time can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Madam Chairman?
Yes. This is properly second and now adjourned. Have a good evening.